The United States of America, in two very public, which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Paul, do you do a sound?
Yes, let me probably thank you for allowing us to come together tonight, thank you for all the blessings that you have thrown on us, Steve, thanks for that, we ask that you be with us here tonight, thank you for those that serve our community, we ask your blessings on them and your wisdom and your knowledge to help us move forward as a community and as a people here tonight, we do thank you for all of you, your sons, amen.
Amen.
Thank you all for coming, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas to you, all make all that happen, beautiful. Roll call, Alderman Ward one, Jeff Bodkins, accent this evening, Alderman Ward one, Jason Osborne, Alderman Ward two, Mark Greening, Alderman Ward two, Adrian Saunders, just running a little behind this evening, Alderman Ward three, Juven Moss, Alderman Ward three, Kitchenmaker, thank you all for coming. Public comments, anybody have anything?
I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to get on the agenda because I didn't know I needed to ask this question until about 2:00 o'clock this afternoon. Regardless of how old anybody is in this room, I need to have something handled by the city that should have happened before, all of our births, a long time ago. So, back in the day, some paperwork is not always done when things happen, and Holler Road Street Gym, the old one, happens to be built on an alley that was never vacated by the city of Monroe, city formally, legally. So, we are preparing the whole old Holler Road Street School ground for sale, and in order to do this, we have to clean it up. And since part of the gym is built on the alley, that is another thing we need to clean up, so what I'm asking for is an ordinance to be put into place, and a motion to allow the mayor to sign the necessary documents, to transfer the alleyway that's marked in the yellow highlight, all of that alley, to the Diocese of Jefferson City. From there, they'll handle dealing with the gym, which belongs to the Christ of Club or Knights Columbus, but one step, I need an ordinance and a motion to allow the mayor to sign between John Russell and the title company, and I will get the documents ready for the signature that we need. This should have happened back in the...
1957.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Somebody's a little behind.
Just a smidge, but we're cleaning it up now, that is what we're after.
So, just the part that the gym is on or this whole is second?
Anything that's yellow is what you're going to be transferring and vacating as an alley, it's called alley abandonment, and you're going to say that's no longer an alley, not like we've been using it since 1957, '89. I mean, it's not being used and it's not serving any purpose. Once that alley is vacated, we'll be able to transfer the part of the building to the Knights of Columbus and then to an eventual buyer with the rest of the ground.
They're not buying the parents.
No, 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 gym's not for sale, nothing like that.
Just where the school's at.
Just where the school's at and the practice field, as we call it, that is what's going to be sold, but this is just cleanup, guys, if anything is a no-brainer, this one is because somebody else should have done it decades ago.
All right, looks like we need to get this to John Russell, what about the details?
And I would appreciate a motion to create an ordinance and allow you to sign, if we could, please. It's not going to cost the city anything.
What happens to the ones on the page?
Not in the legal description. That'll be up to the owner, this is not costing the city anything.
Is it affect a mud house's next building?
It was over the alley.
This doesn't, this only affects ground that's owned by the Diocese.
That's right there on the alley, because that was all connected.
They built a school there too, see, that's the whole thing, it just never happened, and maybe back then they didn't think it was important to vacate an alley formally. Guys, I just did one of these in another neighboring community, that a house was sitting in the middle of the street, the street had been abandoned mentally 45 years ago, but never officially, this is the same premise, mentally, the city of Monroe stopped using that ground, said, yeah, build a school, build a gym, do what you need to do, but the paperwork was never completed, and that's an official abandonment of the highlighted area that you see. And this does not go, the yellow part's a little long on one spot, this does not go behind Bernadine Mudd's house or onto the pace ground, this is just for property owned by the Holler Road Street Diocese, we did not survey the other parts. If they want it vacated, they're going to have to come to you with their own paperwork survey.
Make a motion that we give this to the county attorney to draw up an ordinance so we can vacate the said alley that's in question.
Have a motion?
Please.
A second, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Anyone else this evening, public comment? All right, we're going to move on, consent agenda, council, can you please review the minutes from 12:07:23? Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 12:07:23, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Financials, please review the accounts payable.
You had said at the administration meeting last night that after this, that we were current, right?
Yeah, I was going to add that, yeah. So, what I was going to say, my report is, so, as of right now, if you all approve the accounts payable, all of the vendors within the city limits of Monroe City will be payable, and we will be current on all of our pass due bills for the city of Monroe, and we're pretty close to being all paid up with several other bills as a whole, and I've been trying to get those prepared and ready to go because Wendy, the auditor, was coming in, so.
And Steve is here today.
Why were some of it orange, orangey red, I think there's one on each page? When I went back and double-checked my numbers to make sure I had, I left out a little bit of difference of one invoice or something like that, there's only two, so I wanted to make sure that it represented the correct amount that totaled the invoice that you have in front of you.
Can I ask a question, Jeanine Crable, instead of overpayment of budget for electric and gas?
Budget billing, she was on budget billing and she overpaid, so we pulled back what she had actually paid to keep her budget on track.
She passed.
She passed.
She passed, so her daughter's requesting her money back, also, she's wanting to get money back.
But she had overpaid, and she was a budget biller, so we needed to get that back.
We have accounts payable one and two?
And three.
There's three?
There's three, I just gave you three, because those are the ones that just came in this afternoon, there's only three, there's only three items on that one.
Okay, and there are all the hard copies.
Those are the hard copies, this side has the copies, I was trying to preserve trees.
And a second, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Mayor's report, I just have a few things, Steve Connelly is here, working on getting us, giving our financials in order. There were questions on how we're operating on our old budget, and I had Jennifer pull the, some information on that, and I would like for her to give us a little update on what she has discovered, clarification.
So, there's been quite a few questions and concerns about the city operating on a budget from the previous year, excuse me, and that is actually a pretty normal procedure. If you can't, if you don't have the numbers or the manpower, for whatever reason, can't get a budget together, you take your most recent year that was approved by your board and you put it into place, it's up to the board to make a decision on if they're going to allot for like a 3% to 12% increase for inflation, so that's what I've done, I have included all of the funds, the departments, and carried over previous numbers, we will be going through these numbers with the auditor and verifying each one of them, verifying deposit amounts, and I expect the process to take roughly two weeks for us to get the actual numbers together, and so hopefully by the next meeting, we will have hard numbers to produce to the board and to the public. And there was a question about a Missouri statute on if we could operate on a previous budget, I've included those statutes for the board's review, we are not in violation of any statute, we can operate as long as the board approves operating on previous numbers or a previous budget that was already approved, that's actually what the state recommends as it's stated in the statute, and we are in complete compliance with it.
And we have the minutes and documented where the board did approve operating on the previous budget year, and it's written, should the board fail to adopt a budget by the start of the city fiscal year, the last adopted budget remains in effect until the new budget is adopted, this means that any spending cannot exceed that in the last budget, which we are in compliance, we have not, so I just wanted to clarify that and make sure everybody was aware. Other than that?
Do we have the actuals from last year yet?
No, that's, yeah, that's what we're working on right now, there's where the holes are, where we can't move forward with the budget for the next year, we've got, we're filling in holes.
That's his first thing to verify, is all of numbers from last year, so we can take those numbers and press them in as our starting balance on this year's budget.
If, if we would have had all of that, we would have an operating budget, that's, that's it, you know, that's the hard part right now, is figuring out the actuals, where we left off, so we know where to start, but like she said, hopefully, two weeks.
Do you think we'll have actuals in two weeks too?
Yeah.
That is the goal, that he's here to help us, and we're going to push as hard as we can through the numbers for as many hours as it takes to get those out.
Are we looking like special items from the subcommittees to add to that, but it?
I will be, yes. Okay, if nothing else, I'm going to move on, city administrator's report, Tammy.
Just wanted to let you know that I've been in contact with Murma, now this fire department has a nice little toy, our new drone, they've been testing it out, it's a pretty handy-dandy little contraption there, I'm really excited, that needs to go underneath our insurance so that that is covered and policy-wise, so there's a form that I just got sent yesterday, we're going to get that underneath our equipment insurance for the, for the city, working on finishing up sales tax for the last two months of the year, and then security benefits by the end of the year, and be working on the grant, the federal grant proposal on the federal level for the transformer, January 12th.
Thank you, Tammy, there was one other item that I wanted to give clarification on, we had a resident concerned, well, it's in the administrative committee minutes, nuisance, the nuisance minutes, that we tore down an old dilapidated shed at 606 More Clocas, and why didn't that resident have to pay for that, we did invoice him, and he is expected to pay for that, we did not do that for free by no means, everybody will be treated the same way when it comes to, you know, dealing with our nuisance issues in town, so this individual was sent an invoice, and if he doesn't pay, then our city attorney will take it to the next step, and we will proceed with getting that payment from that individual, so.
Question for Tennessee.
And I do, one more thing, and I do, I was hoping Mr. Chief would be here this evening, because I tell you what, it looks so much better over there, so much better on Long Street with Mr. Smith and Mr. Chief's properties down.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I've got a couple calls from people over there in that area saying, oh my gosh, you know, this is so wonderful, not to do, because they were dealing with some rodents, rats and cats, it was bad, it was, it was an issue, so I wanted to thank him for taking that care of that, Long Street, yeah, yeah, so.
Do you still have manager meeting? Okay, well, I was under the impression that George didn't get invited to any surgery, any reason why?
Depending on what the topic is that we're reviewing, whether it be HR issues, whether it be internal city, I don't always include George in something, it depends, and I've had a conversation with George, and I let him know that sometimes you're going to get those, those invites, and sometimes you're not, it just depends.
He takes care of the order too.
Yeah, yeah, but he, all of his staff are contract under him, so sometimes, like I had a meeting this week, on Monday, we went over some new forms in regards to on-call and callbacks, so that we had clarification on that for payroll, and that doesn't involve George, so I didn't, I didn't invite George, so, yeah.
All right, let's have like you on top of it.
Yeah, I usually touch base with them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, city attorney's report.
Oh, that's it, that's all she had?
John's couldn't be with us this evening, he's got some illnesses, I think that's plaguing heck with Monroe City right now, so, council committees, planning and zoning, Bodkins is not here this evening, I do not think they clarified on, they didn't have anything.
Well, he was at the administration committee last night, and he said something about, he made a comment to me about how we had talked about selling some of the city-owned properties, and that I was in favor of that, and I said, I just brought it up as a way to get it off of the city's, you know, list, and to get it back on the tax docket, and so we wouldn't have to pay to maintain those properties, and he said, well, he has been talking to John Russell, which he's not here, so I don't know that about, he said, maybe we ought to see if that going ahead and selling the ones in town, the city-owned properties, not the industrial, I don't know what the difference it makes, but anyway, he said he thought that they should be auctioned off, and then he's talked to John Russell about that, I have not talked to John Russell about it, I was just told to bring it up because I'm not on that committee.
Okay.
Yes.
He also mentioned in that, that the city might need to take part of the golf course as an incentive.
Oh, that's right, yeah, he said that right now where the city dumps brush out of Harlem Greases, that, you know, that's getting full, and so that Kevin had mentioned using some of the city-owned property out that direction, for like five acres for limbs and brush and stuff like that.
Okay.
That we have to, yeah, to talk to him about with Kevin and John Russell.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Osborne. Economic development, is Alderman Bodkins, I think he's had a meeting on that, administrator report, Alderman Osborne?
Yeah, we had a meeting last night, and one thing that was mentioned, and I know Adrian's brought it up, we talked about it before, she called it a parking lot, that having a list of things like old business and dated, so that we know that, okay, this is one that was brought up, and then have another date where it was accomplished, or and then remove it from the list, so that we constantly know what's ongoing, so that things don't get swept under the rug, so.
I think we discussed that before, having that at the end, yeah?
I have started an Excel list, and we're going to put it under old business, where it's just going to be a report that's brought to every meeting, you guys will review it before the meeting, and say, add, make your comments, whatever's needed to update it, but it'll start being included in the council meetings, if that's where you want it.
Okay, and then we need to have the next admin committee meeting, probably Alderman Greening, it's what we had last week, December, so, the next council meeting is January 4th, correct?
Yeah.
So.
Unless you all move it.
So, when?
Because we have two, two days coming back.
Oh, okay.
And if we move it to the 11th, it gets a little bit more of that time.
So, it would be the 11th and, what is the?
25th.
11th and 25th, council, how do you feel about that, since there's only two days coming back from, you know, break and several days shut down?
I don't have a problem with that, and then if we could, then if we do do that, have the admin committee meeting on the 4th.
Okay.
And at that meeting, we'll need all the councilors possible, and I'll talk to admin members, and then we're going to need city clerk, city administrator, and mayor as president.
What time?
Probably, let's do 5:30, probably.
Okay.
Because we're going to go over like the ordinances, the job descriptions, ordinances, and things like that, because there's been, I guess, some questioning on who answers to who, and things like that, and then we'll just have everybody there, like when it comes to council, mayor, city clerk, city administrator, all that, and I'm going to invite John Russell to be there, so that we can go over and make any changes to ordinances that need to be made, and so if everybody's there, the lines of communication are open, and there's no question or anything about what's what.
Sounds like a plan, so January 4th, administrative committee meeting at 5:30 PM, and for the month of January, our council meetings will be January 11th at 6:00 PM and January 25th at 6:00 PM.
Motion.
Do I have a motion to approve moving those meetings to those said dates?
Oh, maybe.
Motion to move those meetings to the 11th and 25th at 6:00 PM, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Uh.
All right, so moved, thank you.
What's the date on that? Are you going to bring them?
January 4th at 5:30 PM.
It's probably a meeting, but closed, because we're talking about personally, some of that may be closed.
Because it will be discussion of personnel issues. Is, when is the 4th, the 4th is on Thursday?
All of them are.
Okay, got you.
We have a new speaker.
I'll finish up, Alderman Shoemaker with Alderman Osborne?
I think that's, I did have a question though about the courtesy van for the airport, is that operational now, it is, isn't it? I think it'd be kind of nice if we did some kind of presentation thing for the paper, since the VFF, you know, what do you all think?
We did a presentation at one of the festivals.
Okay, is it in the paper?
Paper's there, I don't know if they took any pictures or reported on it, but we did a presentation at the gazebo, the fall festival.
Okay.
We'd be more than happy to gather up some guys and do it again at any point in time you want to.
I'm thinking kind of something positive, something nice.
The van wasn't 100% legal at that time, so it wasn't, it wasn't present during the presentation, it was just tied with keys.
So, we'll just wax it up and have it in the picture and do it again.
It got used last night, by the way.
That fly from Chicago to Texas, spent the night in a motel.
Very good.
Cool.
Very good.
And then my last thing, I was just curious about, is Missouri Metalcraft current on their wire transfers for their utilities?
We got our thing clarified with them, that, that payment arrangement was current bill plus that payment.
We're going to revise, we're revisiting that this week, John Russell, Dana and Mick are all revisiting that, so that way, they want to get into a routine of paying a portion at the beginning of the month, or week, and the 5,000 at the end of the week, and then another portion, so that way, by the time you go through four weeks, you have the amount going towards the actual payment, so they actually want to get into the natural rhythm of ACH with the law.
Right. All right, Alderman Shoemaker?
January 1st, on a nuisance meeting.
January 3rd?
Yes.
What time?
At 5:00.
5:00 PM, and you all had a meeting, I know I seen the minutes in here somewhere.
Yes, we didn't have a call.
Okay, okay, so January 3rd at 5:00 PM will be the next nuisance meeting, and I would like to encourage everyone that's on that committee to please be present, we, my goal is to really start hammering down beginning 2024 with getting things cleaned up, we need to get the ball rolling and keep it rolling, so, any help would be appreciated. City departments, I told all of the heads of departments they didn't have to come tonight unless there was something pressing, pressing that they need to make the council aware of, so, you have what they have been working on in your tactics, if you have any questions, council?
I was just seeing how, what the status of the other delinquent utilities are, have we made progress?
Yes. One more question. The progress on delinquent utility collection.
Actually, I have that in your packet, and really proud to say that we are, have collected this past month over 97,412.83 dollars overall against the delinquents, and 42 people have dropped off the delinquent list, so we actually are shrinking the delinquent list, so it is going down, and we are making progress towards it.
Does that include metal craft?
Yes, it does.
What's the overall total amount still delinquent?
Grand total, total amount due. I'll have to get that.
663,000.
Sorry about that.
That's it?
663,000, 65,000.
Last report was 663,065.97 dollars was last report, as of 12/6.
That's, that's just delinquent?
Yes.
But most of that is metal craft?
Yes.
Yeah, that's how much is metal craft?
605, or 605,000.
Yikes.
600 and 5?
Yeah, 500.
Yeah.
Juven, 500?
They're not on the list.
No, metal craft is on the list, oh yeah, no, 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 you're on the list, yeah.
So, did they wind up having to do disconnects?
No, they got it in within the timeframe in regards to the contract that John Russell and them got together.
Cool, what about the residential's?
Residential's, we had several disconnects, and Phoebe just counted up how many we have left that are still disconnected.
There's probably like five that are still disconnected, but we found out that some of those residents have moved and didn't, the landlords or the tenant, either one let us know that nobody was living in those properties, so.
So, council, if you look, you want to look at, and correct me if I'm wrong, you want to look at column two, amount due, because if you look over here at the last one, that's going to reflect the current, the current bill that's also due on top of it, which is technically not delinquent yet, of course, so if you look at the second line, the second column, 516,068 is what Missouri Metalcraft part is, and 248,948 is current doing.
current delinquent.
Current delinquency. Apart from Missouri Metal Craft. And you've got to realize Missouri Metal Crafts' monthly bill runs
Almost a hundred thousand.
About a hundred thousand, so it does not take them long to get looking really, really bad.
Yeah.
They're up to date on their payment on the utility?
As of right now, they are current, they have until, as of right now, they are current, um, bills aren't due until August, or the twenty seventh of the month, and they have just a small portion left towards it.
But they've been paying.
Yes, they have been, they have been staying current.
Like your continental memory.
So we've collect, sorry.
They genuinely want, John Russell and I had a conversation this past week, um, even though we've been playing phone tag in regards to a Zoom call, trying to get all of us on the call at the same time to actually finish ironing out, ironing it out in regards to how much they need to pay in regards to the big lump going towards their current bill, and then the five thousand going towards the previous amount that's in the promissory note. They, John Russell and I both felt that they're very genuinely, Mick is trying to work it out so that it is easier on their pockets in regards to, as opposed to having a hundred, hundred thousand dollar bill at the end of the month due. If he can do twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, then that last month, when the actual deadline is is due, he only has twenty five thousand left. That's a much easier amount to come up with.
Is it a month or a week?
A month.
Twenty five thousand a month?
A week, no, 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 a week, because their overarching bill is about a hundred thousand a month.
And then they're paying an extra twenty five thousand a week, is that what you're saying?
Not extra.
What are they paying towards the delinquent a month?
Uh, twenty thousand, close to about twenty thousand. It's five, five thousand, ninety six dollars and ninety six cents, I do believe is the actual number that comes in.
So you divide it about how many, into how many months?
Eighteen months is what John Russell and them agreed upon.
That's a fair question.
Yeah, we have a city in the package, I mean.
It keeps our door open, you guys, and keeps people employed.
And we have a lot of people that are on payment plans, so it's.
We're going to do a payment plan for our residents, why wouldn't we want to do a payment plan and work with an industry in town that's providing jobs?
Exactly.
They haven't defaulted on the payment plan, so they're holding up their end of the deal, the contract that was, that was drafted with our city attorney, so we're not going to default on that either.
I mean, they are genuinely trying, I mean, it's, it is, John Russell and I have that conversation, so.
I've got a question. So is it, so since we're getting things current and paid, so are we, has everybody got their deposits back? That, I know Heather and Tyler's never gotten their re-deposit back when they moved. So I was wondering if that's all been caught up to getting people's deposits back that have moved, or refunds or whatever.
I know several have been issued.
I can say, we just signed some again today, Jackie's about sixty percent through that full deposit list. And as, as we get through a sheet or a section, Jackie's been handing us those, and we've been trying to get those cut, because like the mayor just cut some, or just signed some today for those, so we are attempting to try to get those.
Well, I know we're having trouble with the mail, probably just one of it has gotten lost, and they should keep an eye or what, so.
And and the, um, all utility bills now, or any, um, deliveries for mail in town is going and routed through Saint Louis now.
We only got one of our two.
We have quite a few that have been lost, a lot that have been lost.
I just got mine yesterday.
Yeah, so.
So just to reiterate, so you've collected ninety seven thousand?
Just within the last month.
Within the last, since the last meeting?
Since the last meeting.
And then we've got, what, three hundred thousand yet on the residential side that, okay, but they're all on payment?
We have several that are on payment, man.
Okay.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
Quite a few. Most of it, I guess, any of them that were on, have disconnected, was originally turned into the, um, review back in July by the board, is on a payment later. Yeah, so.
Or they're shut off.
Yeah, so the original list that we had, the very first one for delinquencies that was on, that then became on the shut off list, where we posted the shut offs on the people's residencies, um, all of those, we've gotten through all of those. And most of those have come in and either went on a payment plan or paid in full, and that's why I say we have had forty two that have come off of that delinquent list. So we are, again, we're making huge tries.
Definitely.
Okay.
On the bank statement, it says on some of these that they will return.
Yes.
Or I guess y'all keep track of that so that we can get that money.
Yeah, and the bank calls me on those so that I can, we can then turn around and either call them or try to get them to come in on that.
And then one more thing I want to think about, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Alderman Greening, it said something about the U S Cellular bill, the last meeting. And that the city clerk was gonna, have you had a chance to look into that?
Um, I have briefly, um, on record, there is, um, forty three phones, but I, they didn't know if they were all active, if they had an active line. But there was forty three phones on the account, that we were being charged for forty two phones. Um, they're supposed to be sending an updated contract, the most recent contract, um, that's for the city, showing usage, what lines are active, what lines were paid for but not active, so who essentially isn't using that service provided by the city. Um, and how many phones are in use, and how many phones, um, are being paid for but not in use. So they'll show the various.
Thank you.
Cool.
Uh, city departments, do we have any, any department heads that need to discuss anything with council? Yes, Del?
Um, the money, when people come in and buy fuel at the airport and they pay for it with credit cards, that money then is directly deposited into your checking account or your, the city's account. Are you keeping track of that so we know, so we can keep track of how much was spent for fuel and how much you've got back?
Yes. Yes, Del, um, when someone comes in, it's the program we call Receipt Management, so when they come in, um, Phoebe or them, whoever takes that money, we actually have a dropdown that we select, and it puts air, uh, fuel for the airport, and then it goes directly into the general ledger.
So you've got a record?
Yep, yep, it's.
Also, a couple, at the, the day of the last council meeting, the water heater blew up out there, it blew water all over the office. And I was wondering where we're at on that, and if they were going to see if we have any new water heater.
Do you have a, any kind of bid or estimate on how much that would cost?
Um, I think it's been talked about through the council through a email, but.
Cause there's one from Rowies, one from mine, so.
Low was two hundred dollars cheaper.
And that's the one I recommended, because it was bigger. I recommended the bigger one, Front Lowe's, and it was cheaper.
Council, do I have a motion to approve the expenditure on replacing the water heater at the airport? Which, which bid?
Lowe's.
Lowe's.
Was it under five hundred dollars? I was under that bracket.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
About three hundred dollars, that's fine.
It was three hundred dollars, it was two hundred and ninety seven dollars, and it was a twelve gallon versus a ten gallon, um, from Rowies were three hundred and fifty nine dollars. So it was bigger for you, and it was also cheaper.
I like that Chris Whelan and the electric department, they took the old one out, and they were putting the other one back in.
We should have backed up.
Yeah.
I just felt comfortable getting a motion for that expenditure since we kind of closed spending. Just to put that on record that it was approved after freezing spending. So, I have a motion to approve the purchase of the hot water heater from Lowe's for approximately two hundred and ninety, three hundred dollars um, with the, uh, city departments getting that installed for the airport, so I have, do you have a motion? Have the motion and a second? And a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, can you get with them to see if somebody will get it?
Excuse me?
Can you get with somebody or Cabitho to see that somebody go?
Just let me know, we're, we're working out somehow.
I'll get that ordered tomorrow, or if they have it in stock, I'll double check on that for you.
Okay, and the rotating beacon out there has got bulbs out of it. Um, I think they had one bulb, I think those bulbs are incandescent bulbs, it's pretty expensive. And I said something to Chris about checking with, with, uh, Kerry about maybe getting L E D bulbs to go in there that would last a lot longer. Um, it's been out for a couple of months, and it needs to be fixed.
Bulbs for the what, tell me again?
Rotating beacon.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll have.
Possibly like you get, I don't, maybe can't get L E D bulbs, I don't know, but.
Okay.
It needs to be fixed regardless.
Yeah. We'll get that taken care of.
Safety issue.
Oh, and I told you already, the guy used the courtesy car last night, and he was very happy with it. He thought he could just sleep in it instead of the truck.
All the senators, come join us.
About done.
Yeah, it's kind of been just right, yeah.
We do.
Yes.
Hey.
We have a couple things for PD, uh, first thing we'd like to address is the S R O car, the charger that is non-functional. Nate has got some numbers for you, we've been following them over the past week and a half, uh, with the different options we have, so he'll run through that with you.
That's the paper clip, additional papers that I put in front of here, all the, um, things that, yep, yep, it's all in one.
Did you approve the numbers for the other two? So, in that, we got quotes of what, quotes and estimates of what it would need to do, and engine rebuild, engine swap, or getting a new to us vehicle that's been used.
So the, the vehicle that I've found, um, is from Joe Offre, he's cars in Bonita, Oklahoma. Um, I've got a fair amount of, uh, experience working with Joe, Joe's good people. Um, he is, basically what he does is he goes to police auctions, um, for municipalities within about four states around us and him. Um, and he buys, you know, low mileage stuff that is going to be good to resell. Um, he has got a two thousand seventeen Charger, or, no, we have Charger, a two thousand seventeen Explorer, um, all wheel drive with, uh, the V six motor in it. Um, he is going to list that thing if we do not buy it for thirteen thousand, nine hundred. Um, but he is going to sell it to us for eleven five, and then he is going to give us, uh, fifteen hundred dollars for our Charger. He's going to take care of getting rid of it, um, and then he's going to give us another hundred dollar discount. Um, what is going on with it is the motor, um, the cam and lifters have went out of it again. Um, this will be the second time that the cam and lifters in that car have been replaced. Um, I talked to Travis Turpin and another mechanic out of Centuria that does a lot of work for Bing Canning Service Department and for the Centuria Police Department. Both of them said, um, anywhere between five and seven thousand dollars to replace the motor in that Charger. If one of them were to do it, um, and both of them said we'd be upside down in the car like no other. So right now, it's got a hundred thousand, uh, seven hundred and twelve miles on the car. Um, and then for idle hours, it has six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen idle hours. That translates to is every hour of idle time is thirty three miles driven. Um, so on that engine and transmission, there's two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty one thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven miles. And together, uh, with the driven mileage and the idle hours, there's three hundred and twenty two thousand, four hundred and thirty nine miles um, on that Charger that we have. I did get a list of all of the repairs that we have done to that car um, since the last time that we did cam and lifters on that car, and it's, I think Tammy and I came up with two different numbers, I came up with five thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents. Um, then we bought a used driver's seat from J C's um, because the, the seat that was in it, there was metal poking up out of it and everything else. Um, it does need a, a multi-function switch, which is going to be a grand, um, to be able to pass inspection because the brakes don't work.
This is adding no, no other drivetrain repairs to it, so transmission and everything like that, uh, that's all still original, so that's all got that close to four hundred thousand miles on it.
So ninety nine hundred dollars, we can have a new to us car that's had highway miles, it was a detective unit from the Des Moines, Iowa Police Department.
What are you currently using right now?
Um, right now, I'm driving, uh, the Tahoe that is assigned to Zach, so Zach is having to use his personal car to respond to calls off duty.
And that leaves us one patrol car into the one K nine minute. So right now, all of our guys are switching in and out between patrol, the one patrol, and then the K nine officer is using the one K nine.
You know, what do you have in mind about your budget?
I, I haven't seen a budget since October last year.
I'd say we can't make a decision on that time until we get some numbers looked at. Hopefully Zach, a couple of weeks, will have a clear picture and be able to make a solid decision on this. We know it has to be done, we just need to know if it can be and how to. Is that fair, council?
I have a question. You explained a while back why we have to leave those cars idling, can you re-explain that?
So that has to do with all of the equipment that we have for those, uh, with your radars, your printers, all those things, a lot of them are very temperature, uh, dependent, uh, to have them operating, they've got to be within certain thresholds, so during fall and spring, it's not as big of an issue, but during the winter and summer, you got to make sure they're within operation ranges. Also, with computer systems inside of it, you're looking at ten, fifteen minutes to get some of that started up, so if we were to get, you know, an emergency call, we don't have time to sit around trying to get everything logged back in and running to be able to get to those calls, so that's what that comes down to.
How is he going to hold this?
Um, so he has three other agencies that are ready to pay him thirteen nine for it, like tomorrow. So I need to let him know probably by noon tomorrow if we're going to pull the trigger on it or not.
I believe he noted on the quote that it was good for, um, ten days, that he would honor it for ten days.
Uh, and this post, December is, December eleventh is when he set up this.
He goes to the library from Oklahoma, or you got to go in?
Um, he's going to meet us halfway.
What are you going to take down there?
Um, I'm probably going to end up driving the personal car down there.
I know, but what are you going to do about this charger?
Uh, he's going to send a trucking company to come get it.
And then also on the bikes, fortunately, Nate's father and myself, we've both wired up a bunch of Ford Explorers before. So the light packs and everything, we've already got lights, consoles, everything that needs to go back into the Explorer. We already have all of that, and we'll be able to do the install on that on our own, so that'll save us money on the outfitting as well. The only thing we'll need to be professionally installed is just right here.
Say the radio, I think maybe the camera system.
You said you got two other vehicles here, two other vehicles.
Yeah, so you got two other similar vehicles, I think one was.
We had another one that was similar in price, but it was significantly higher in mileage and significantly higher in idle hours, uh, in general engine hours. And then the other, which is comparable to this, was significantly higher in price, so.
Zach, we're down in office, we're down, you're short staffed, right?
Yes, yeah, we're, we're down.
How many are you short staffed, and how long have you been short staffed?
Uh, we've been short staffed for about six months, and we're down four officers.
Down four officers?
One of those is captain position that we're going to be getting rid of, the other is detective position, but that leaves two road officer positions.
So my, my question, my reason for that question was trying to see if there were probably monies in your budget that would be in, you know, your salaries that have not been spent.
In that round time.
We should have, uh.
What was the captain's pay?
The detective, we should have the detective's captain's position, then one road officer, and all of those should be over six to eight months worth of copy rate, so.
And what was, what was the captain's position's pay for one month approximately?
Forty eight.
You know, uh, let's see, he was at twenty, twenty three dollars, wasn't he?
Yeah.
So maybe four grand a month. And six months, you haven't been paying that position?
Yeah.
You'll find the police department.
Okay, yeah.
They haven't spent hardly any money in their budget. It's very reasonable to think that there is money available. Um, it's very reasonable to think that there is money available, um, for that vehicle.
And we would not be going over the last year's budget if we have salaries that weren't being paid for six months.
We would be kept under that.
So what other expenses will, there, there won't be any other expenses?
So outside of, outside of doing the, outside of doing the camera system and the radio, that would be the only two things that need to go out. Uh, did you have a quote on how much those were on the other vehicles?
Um, no, but I can have that fairly easily, um, and then the lettering, uh, we're gonna probably try and do a vehicle wrap on it, and the school has agreed to pay for at least half of it, cause we're gonna put a big old panther head on it.
And that is nothing that has to be done immediately, so if we can get it roofworthy, get it operational, and then worry about the, the lettering on it whenever, whenever that comes.
So I feel comfortable with the expenditure, council. I don't know how you feel about it.
Uh, the other thing is, we have talked, there are a bunch of different agencies around us that do utilize the Explorers. Uh, they are tremendously well on gas, that is one of the big things. Uh, these have the EcoBoost hybrid engines in them, they're six cylinders that are turbo-boosted, so they are very good on gas, uh, and really, nobody's had any issues with them, but.
I think the sheriff's office has one right now that has two hundred and seventy-five thousand miles on it, it's still.
Um, they're, they're fairly reliable.
We did the engine repair to this Charger once?
Yep.
How long has that been?
Not even three years, no. That's the original transmission.
They're estimating at this point that if we were to do another engine rebuild, that we would be looking at less than two years, and we'd be right back in the same position. And we're probably gonna.
Nope, nope, cause it's an, it's an I-0 car.
Does this Explorer come with any kind of warranty?
Uh, no, it does not.
Yeah, and you're not getting extended warranties on a police vehicle.
Make a motion to allow them to purchase this forward from the year of the phone.
I have a motion to purchase the two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer from, uh, Joe Watt in Benita, Oklahoma. Have a second? A second? All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Okay, so I have four ayes and one abstaining. Motion carries.
We appreciate it, thank you, all.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, the only other thing that I have for tonight is the best, I told you all I would have some numbers on those for this meeting, uh, however, all three of our selections are unavailable at this point. Uh, one of them is out, not taking orders for an unknown amount of time. Uh, we have another one that will be at least six months before we put out an order. We're looking at possibly another six months for build time on them. Um, and then the last one has increased by several hundred dollars per unit, uh, by the time we look into that, we're looking at close to about fifteen hundred dollars extra along the course that we did have. So right now, I'm trying to, uh, get ahold of one of these companies, see if we can get us pumped up since we're law enforcement. Uh, and hopefully that works. Outside of that, right now, we are just kind of stuck as far as best go. Uh, so I'll keep working to see what we can get number-wise, and then hopefully have those for you all next meeting.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, you will.
Thank you.
And next in your package, you will find, um, excuse me, bids for, uh, pole purchases for the electric department. Back at, uh, Anixer, I think, is the first bid, way back in the back, for nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Yeah, Graybar, fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Another bid from Graybar for twenty-one thousand, what is the difference there? Six-four, twenty-two.
One, oh, thirty-four, one, forty-two. Maybe one thirty-four, forty-three, what do they have on that, you know?
He needs twenty-six right now, um, and he knows he's probably gonna need another six in the fall, or in the spring, so putting in thirty-two is where he's at. So that's why he was okay with the thirty-four, um, so whichever. And he said any one of these companies, he's fine with, he's worked with all of them.
And there's another one for Fletcher Reinhardt for twenty-three. And he's got the forty-two. How many does he need right now?
Twenty-six. And then he's gonna need six, he says as soon as, most likely, um, as soon as the round would thaw, because it'll change, it'll pitch some a little bit different, he said he knows six of them that he's watching, that he would need to change out.
And that leaves?
Two.
Any extra?
That leaves two extras. If you get thirty, if you get thirty-four.
Here's a bid in there for Erb, from Erby, that's a thousand dollar keeper than Graybar, that's for thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents. That's for six-six, or six-four and thirty-four, four.
And this has been discussed and approved item in his last year's budget, I do believe, so this is just.
Is he okay with any one of these?
Any one of those, he said would be fine. He just needs the poles.
Uh, make a motion to go with the Erby company, let's, he's a bid of thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, twelve cents.
I have a motion and a second to purchase the poles from Erby for thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There's also something in here, I thought, um.
That's the last thing in the book, the insurance, what is that?
That was the last, you were just looking at it.
Cause Shelby.
No, this is something for Cal.
Shelby's already gonna, but you tell, I gave you a copy of the list.
Okay, gotcha.
And he has put together, that's all that is.
This is something for Cal, something that they've made up.
They would, um, need to, Zach, are you still here?
Yeah.
Was that for?
Kim's here. You did, you asked for, um, J.C. Parks for the two thousand twenty Chevy Tahoe, um, expenditure for two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
That was to replace the wiring harness that burned up, and we're gonna be sending the bill to Wireless USA for them to reimburse us. Cause it was a mess-up when we installed.
Is the car still offering pull-out?
Uh, it, it is now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need to do anything with that? Do we need to prove it?
It's a hundred percent reimbursement?
Yes, yes.
I was under the impression that it already, it already been purchased and.
It hasn't been purchased yet, has it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, otherwise the car wouldn't be around.
Yeah.
It's all over the block.
So that was just an update, letting us know that that, that bill will be reimbursed. Yeah.
And on the water, the new line, um, George said he's already talked to Mark, Mark Bros. There is monies in the USDA, um, project, the water project, to reimburse us for the eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars for the shelving. So, um, as soon as we buy those, we keep the receipt, we'll give it to Mark Bros, and then we'll get those reimbursed back to us.
That'll come out of the USDA for that project, yes. All right. Well, ladies and gents, I don't have anything else for this evening. Enough closed session this evening, so.
Motion adjourned.
A motion to adjourn, just a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Thank you all for coming.